Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. It is 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Carolyn Muhia, Commissioner Gary Edwards to my left, and Commissioner Klaus may be joining us virtually a little bit later. We're calling this meeting to order and beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards.
Sounds good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to continue with the land acknowledgement?
We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squaxon Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thanks, sir. Next on the agenda is a presentation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have a proposed proclamation, and we have guests from our prosecuting attorney's office as well as our sheriff's office, Kristi Peters, Chief of Staff for the prosecutor. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for, again, recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month in this proclamation. It is so important. Obviously, it's important year-round, but I really appreciate the Board recognizing this month in October and perfectly noted on October 1st. I have the pleasure of introducing our two lead seniors of respective advocates and deputy prosecutors of our domestic violence team for the county, and then I'm going to turn it over to them for the rest of the presentation. So it's my pleasure to introduce Kalen Cecil. She's the lead attorney, senior attorney, deputy prosecuting attorney for domestic violence here in Thurston County, and Kim Carroll. She is our lead victim advocate, also for the domestic violence team here in Thurston County.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us a few moments to share about our work. I'm Kalen Cecil, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. I wanted to tell you a little bit about our team and what your county prosecutors are doing to address domestic violence in our community. We have a team of five prosecutors, three victim advocates, multiple interns, which I'll let Kim talk about in a moment, and six support staff. Our team is so dedicated. We are doing hard work. These are cases that are intense. Every single day, every person we work with is in crisis, but we work together as a team. One of our staff people mentioned recently at a meeting that every single file is a person, a person who needs help, who's suffered some sort of emergency and needs our attention. And we've really struggled over the last few years with the chronic shortage of staff in our office. We have, even now, have staff people working overtime just to keep up. Our victim advocates have been short-staffed as well, and have been putting in many, many hours of overtime, hopefully accounting for all of those hours. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about your deputy prosecutors. I've spent most of my career as a deputy prosecutor, as a domestic violence attorney, which is work I feel I was called to do and I love, but it's hard work. We work regularly, 50 to 60 hours. As exempt employees, we do not get overtime. We work well into the evening. We take breaks to raise our kids, tuck them in for night, and get right back at it. We get phone calls during all hours of the night and often find ourselves going out in the cold to stand next to a dead body, to the point that when my children were growing up, they knew if my phone rang after 8:30, someone had died. That's a toll that's taken, not just on me, and I guess I'm making this about our office today and not the survivors. I just want you to know how hard your team is working for this community. We have to spend time out of our day that we could be doing other work oftentimes to talk about how do we cope with the trauma that we're dealing with? How are we taking care of ourselves? And we take advantage of that employee assistance program probably more than you know. We are scrutinized by the public and criticized by the public for the work that we do. When we're working long hours, short-staffed, we want to do more, but we cannot. We are humans. We have to sleep sometimes. We have to beat ourselves. We have to take days off. But we do this work because we care. We're passionate about these survivors. We're passionate about our communities. Anytime we hear, we see the same social media that all of you do, and anytime we hear there's been a domestic violence incident, and maybe we haven't heard from law enforcement yet, we are sick to our stomachs. We pray that this is not a victim that we have not been able to help or could have done more for. I think we all live with that burden, and it doesn't leave you. When you go into a different assignment or a different area of the office, you're still remembering all those survivors that you worked with. We need support. Our workload has increased tremendously with the advent of body-worn camera footage. So when I was a brand-new deputy prosecutor here in Thurston County in 2010, my case might involve two police reports and a transcript of a taped statement from a victim. That, as budgets became tighter, we stopped getting transcripts. I had to stop and listen. As an attorney, I can read really fast. I could read a 20-minute interview transcribed way faster than I could sit and listen for 20 minutes. Then, all of a sudden, all of our agencies in the county had body-worn camera footage. You have four to six officers on a scene for an hour and a half. That's an entire day's worth of body-worn camera footage that I feel like I've got to review to be prepared for trial. I tried a case a couple of weeks ago, and it's tough. You are way into the middle of the night reviewing body-worn camera footage every night after testimony, trying to find that one time that one person told one of the officers, you're not, can't quite remember which one it was, something different than what they testified about on the stand. And that is very time-consuming, but I do it because I want to do the very best job I can for Thurston County. And I know that that philosophy is shared by my colleagues, and I'm going to hand over my time to Kim so she can talk to you about what the advocates do.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Thank you for the recognition as well. We fight every day to support our survivors. Just briefly, I wanted to let you know that I brought two of our interns with us today. We do utilize as many resources in our community as we can in order to help support our survivors. So Sophie is here, and Kaylee is here. They're college-level interns, and we enjoy having them, and they're very helpful in our goals. And as Kalen said earlier, you know, every single file is a person. I'd like to expand on that just briefly and add that every file is a family. There are children. There's spouses. There's partners. There's, we all recognize that, you know, often it's a partner that's in the system and maybe needs that assistance, but our survivors are still struggling at maybe the absence of that support for their children. And so we are receiving crisis calls constantly. There's three domestic violence advocates in the prosecutor's office, and I was the only one that was able to get away today. Yet, my voicemail is nearly full as in my email. So I will, I'll make this short, but just to know that, you know, we're trying really hard to support our survivors with the resources that we have, and I commend our survivors. You know, they're fighting too. They're fighting in our community to support their families and support their children and to be safe, and we want to be there to support them as well. So thank you very much for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's very important to recognize the work that all of us do, to include our law enforcement partners and our prosecutors and all of you. And we have two more of our prosecutors that have just walked in. I'll let Kalen introduce them as well. Thank you so much.
With Isaac Fortunato, who's one of our misdemeanor prosecutors, and then Nicole Pritikin, who's our brand-new prosecutor. She just got licensed Monday.
You have another member of your team right here.
Oh, I forgot Marshall.
Yes. Marshall, he's our courthouse facility dog. He's the OG. Many of you may have heard about our new facility dog, Sky, who is also, she's not in this building. I couldn't handle two at the moment, and Marshall enjoys coming and visiting the Commissioners, so feel free to, even though he's a trained service dog who's attached to a facility instead of a person, so if you would like to come over and cuddle, feel free.
All right, we'll get him in our picture. Thank you so much. We also have representatives from our sheriff's office, including Sheriff Sanders, so come on up, Sheriff. And Commissioner Klaus is here, by the way, for the record.
Good afternoon, Board. Yeah, the domestic violence stuff, it's pretty important to me. It was pretty impactful in my childhood. I know it's led to a lot of our staff and their reasons to wanting to become law enforcement officers to protect people who need their help. And I guess for me, I'm just proud of the work that the sheriff's office is doing right now in collaboration with the Board of County Commissioners and the prosecutor's office. You know, when you talk about law enforcement, you usually like to see all the sexy work, the SWAT team, the dive team. They're scaling off cliffs to save people, but the work that really goes, I think, unnoticed sometimes is the work that we don't like to talk about for privacy concerns, and that's the constant domestic violence calls that we're responding to every day. You don't see us sharing a lot of that with the news until it goes really bad, unfortunately, and you hear about something significant that occurs. And I always ask myself, as a deputy, I said, you know, we have these specialized units, like the SWAT team in Thurston County, which are necessary, but I think we've ignored that most of our SWAT call-outs have been a result of domestic violence barricaded suspects who are in crisis. And so one of the first things that we did as a sheriff's office when I got elected is we started working on our domestic violence specialty unit, creating a specialized unit of deputies. Right now, we're at one. We're working on growing that in cooperation with the prosecutor's office and Family Support Center and FESS and some of these other organizations to really create subject matter experts who aren't detectives working in an office, but they're actually embedded in patrol, and they're those first responders who are responding out to these incidents. And they've received training on how to basically interview children and whatnot, because unfortunately, children are often the only neutral witness that we have in some of these cases. So I'm proud of the work. We've got Deputy Clark here with us today. He was recently selected to be the first one in those positions. We're going to be adding more, and I just think it's a collaborative effort. It's not something with domestic violence that we're going to arrest our way out of, even though we do have mandatory arrest clauses in the state. It is something where the social network, the law enforcement, and the judicial side is all going to have to come together to solve, and I think that we're starting to make some of that progress here, and a lot of it just comes down to awareness. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other questions from the Board? Are we ready?
You know, I might just do a follow-up. We've heard from the prosecutor's side of things, the seriousness and how they fight this terrible problem, and from the law enforcement side. And also, I mean, the victims are represented here, but the trauma that the victims go through might last for life, and law enforcement officers might give their life. It's one of the most dangerous calls that they can respond to. So I just think it's really important that we highlight this and try to bring awareness to it and do what we can do from our point, and trying to slow this down, because it's an epidemic. It really is. Thank you.
Thurston County Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October has been nationally designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and domestic violence remains a pervasive issue across Thurston County, the United States, and the world, and whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals, households, and society as a whole, and whereas the need for safe housing continues to be rated as survivor's most urgent need, and whereas victim advocates in Thurston County prosecuting attorney's office provided advocacy services to over 1,108 victims of domestic violence so far this year, and whereas Thurston County prosecuting attorney's office has charged 532 domestic violence cases so far this year, and whereas the Thurston County Sheriff's Office deputies responded to 1,364 domestic violence 911 calls so far this year, and whereas education regarding domestic violence and awareness of the devastating consequences of domestic violence for the survivor and the community are necessary to end the cycle of violence, and whereas the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners supports the efforts to promote safety of victims and others through an increased focus on countywide cooperative strategies and public awareness, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Thurston County and encourages all residents to seek help from the Family Support Center of South Sound at 360-750-9297, Safe Place 24/7 hotline at 360-754-6300, or the National DV Hotline at 1-800-799-7233. Adopted this first day of August, October 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners.
We could get a picture with our guests.
Tell us where to look, guys.
He can stay.
All right. Very good. Next up is the opportunity for the public to address the Board. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and don't take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. General speaking guidelines include: Introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. The Board does not respond directly to public comment. On an as-needed basis, the county manager will follow up with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the board and may not donate any of their speaking time to another person. Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, remarks about pending land use permit, or similar matters that come, that could come before the Board on appeal, are not appropriate, and no electioneering. All materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 RCW. So with those general guidelines, we will go through the list, and then anyone who's on Zoom, I'll start with the person who's up first and call who's on deck so they can be ready to go. Emily Burkamp is first, with Barry Halverson on deck.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to share some factual information on the impacts of Initiative 2117. I'm Emily Burkamp, General Manager at Inner City Transit, and I reside in Olympia, Washington. Initiative 2117, which is on the ballot in November, would repeal the 2021 Climate Commitment Act, otherwise known as the CCA, and cut off a significant source of revenue for transportation projects around Washington State. The CCA also funds the Move Ahead Washington legislation that collects, allocates $3 billion for public transit over the next 16 years. If passed, the initiative would eliminate a projected $143 million in funding for inner-city transit over the next 14 years, including $64 million in operating costs for bus and village vans transportation services, $24 million for dial-up pair of transit services for the elderly and people with disabilities, $48 million for zero-emission transit vehicles and necessary infrastructure, $5 million to provide faster transit service along Martin Way, and $2 million for active transportation, safety, and education. It is important to note, I cannot advise the community how to vote on this matter, only to provide factual information on the impacts. The funding of these investments would go towards improving mobility for those who need it most, provide real reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, and improve safety in our community. Thank you for allowing me to provide education on the impacts of Initiative 2117.
Ms. Burkamp, Barry Halverson is up, with John Pettit on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Barry Halverson. I am an unincorporated Thurston County taxpayer from Yale, Washington. Today, I'm going to talk to you about the Capitol Lake to Chute's Estuary interlocal agreement. I sent you some documents yesterday morning. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read those. You have lost the trust of the taxpayers with your numerous budget stumbles, not listening to them and making decisions contrary to their interests. Signing onto this ILA will be just one more instance of that. This is a, this ILA is binding you for 24 years to pay over $7.5 million into a fund to maintenance dredge the areas in Bud Inlet around marinas and yacht clubs. That's what this is for. You have to read the document, Section 1011 of the ILA. Except for the Olympia City Public Marina, these are private businesses and are supporting, and you are supporting them with our tax dollars. This amounts to a gifting of taxpayer dollars to private citizens and businesses. Our tax dollars should not be used for this or anything to do with Bud Inlet. This problem was caused by the state 75 years ago, and it is the state's responsibility to fund any additional dredging if they so desire, or it is the responsibility of the private marinas and yacht club. I forwarded you a letter and detailed the facts about this project. That letter was vetted with the Department of Enterprise Services, the same people that talked to you yesterday, to ensure my facts were correct. When you have another work session on this topic, I hope you will invite me to attend and participate on behalf of the taxpayers of Thurston County. You need to fully understand all aspects of this ILA before you make a decision to commit our tax dollars to this effort. Signing this ILA, as I've said, will be a mistake. You would be subjecting every county commissioner for the next 24 years to paying this debt, and although those costs in the first year are expected to be only $184,000, that annual bill will grow to over half a million dollars a year. You don't have the money. Where do you expect to get the money when you can't even pay for essential services now and must raise sales taxes and/or car tabs to do it? And you want to implement the climate plan and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 95% by 2050? You want to invest in conservation futures? You want to invest in legacy forests? You want to invest in water quality initiatives within unincorporated Thurston County? You don't have the money. You have a lot of conflicting funding issues. This ILA is not worth it. The taxpayers have had enough. Do not approve this ILA. Send it back to DES and make them find another avenue to pay for this. The state should be paying for this. It was created under their jurisdiction 75 years ago. They own the problem. They need to solve the problem. You have lost your objectivity in looking at the issue. You are too invested. You are not looking at it from the taxpayer's perspective. Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halverson. John Pettit, Brett Trowbridge on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live out on Rich Road, and we're starting a whole new season of budget information. I'm going to kind of direct my comments today about budget, but I have to appreciate what Mr. Halverson was having to say. In the private sector, we look at things a little differently than the public sector. In the private sector, dollars represent certain types of values. Now, whether it happened to be the ILA or any other aspect of expenditures you're going to make, you need to have some type of equivalency to associate it with so you get a perspective. It's not just a number that we're approving a number. What we have to do is look at it as an item. So in this particular case, I'm going to suggest this. Break down, figure out what the cost is for every employee is of an average cost for an employee. When you make a decision that you want to vote for something like the ILA, that's saying, oh, we're going to go ahead and get rid of three, four, five, six employees that could be providing services to the county. You have to have some equivalency to measure. It's not just a number. I am pleased to see with what I was observing, with the auditor's office, with the commissioner's office, of restructuring to get the budget program in the hands of the auditor, but also through the commissioners and working together. But everything we do, it amounts to money. That's what the primary job of commissioners is. It's not to represent special interest out there that somebody doesn't want to cut some trees, so the county decided, let's support this legacy forest program of a special interest group. You're talking about cutting jobs for the Olympia School District. Let's go ahead and cut, get rid of four or five teachers. Doesn't matter. It's not our money. Well, from what I understand, Thurston County now recognizes you have a money issue. You don't want anyone touching it. Even the whole idea that you want to reduce that forest cut, you're going to cut your own budget. You're cutting employees. I know you want to make yourselves look good in the eyes of the public, look good in the eyes of the employees, but the truth is, no political agenda item is more important than providing the services for the people of the county and supporting your employees. I just heard from the prosecutor's office about their disgruntled about, even though they're happy with what they're doing to provide service, what I heard also was, we're not getting paid much for this. How are you going to deal with it? Are you just going to say, we don't care about the children or the domestic violence issues because we don't have enough money to support you because, well, we wanted to do the ILA and we wanted to use Save the Legacy Forest. I mentioned to you a number of months ago about every decision should have a fiscal note tied to it. How does it impact everyone, the county? How does it impact the citizens? How does it impact the employees before you make a decision? Without that, you're nothing but a rubber stamp. You need to learn all the facts and think about You need to learn all the facts and think about how you're impacting everyone that you're supposed to be representing and serving. Thank you.
Mr. Trowbridge is next. Terry Ballard's on deck.
I'm Brett Trowbridge. I live on South Patterson Lake in Thurston County. Two issues today. Somebody named Elijah Spear, who works for Hernandez, has come up with a preliminary plan as to what to do with our lake, and it was presented last week at the Patterson Lake Committee meeting. The first thing I want to point out about this is that when you leave people out of lists, it's unfair. You know, I've heard it argued that, oh, sure, we can leave anybody out we want to and we can gerrymander this any way we want. Well, the way it's been gerrymanded here is that although the railroad trestle was left out, all of the work on South Patterson is going to be right under the railroad trestle or immediately south or north of it, two and a half acres south and two and a half north for a total of five acres. All of the work on South Patterson. So Commissioner Edwards said, well, are you happy now? And yes, I am, because that doesn't include any of my properties that I've been fighting so vigorously for all this time, and I guess we get left out, which is good. But why doesn't the railroad trestle pay for all the improvements that have begun right on their property, on their waterfront? You're chart making us pay for it, five hundred and twelve dollars a year, and they've already upped it to five thirty-seven now. So five thirty-seven a year so that they can run their boats north and south between the north and south end of the lake. Why? Is that some sort of something that we want? I've heard it proposed by Mr. Halverson and by Mr. Carmen, you know, the people from the other lakes, but what about the people on our lake? Does anybody even want that? They talk about where they have a regatta, and they have these pontoon boats that have to easily go up north and south between the sections. In fact, I believe Commissioner Klaus supposedly rode on one of these regattas. She can tell you how hard it was to get underneath the trestle because of all these blocking lily pads, but I'll tell you, it wasn't very hard because those boats go through there all the time. We're not getting anything for our five hundred and twelve dollars a month, and the trestle isn't paying a thing. Is that fair? Is that what you guys intended in the first place? Anyway, that's my minor issue for today. Now, my major issue is glyphosate, just like it always is. How do you think that they're going to control these five and a half acres of lilies that are on the north and the south of the trestle, which they want to clear out for the boats, the pontoon boats? Glyphosate, that's their first, first option, their preferred option. Why? We all know that the South Patterson Lakes in the McAllister Springs District, we know that, right? We've finally gone through that. In fact, I thought all five of you commissioners actually voted that we weren't going to use any herbicides in the McAllister Springs District. Am I wrong? If somebody changed their mind, I thought it was five to nothing. But no, that's what they want to do. They want to dump it in South Lake. Why can't they keep their poisons at their end? They're not in the McAllister Springs District. I think what I'm offering is a compromise, since the north end flows to the south end, I could easily argue they shouldn't have any glyphosate either, but as a compromise, at least let's keep it on the side of the line that was set up forty years ago by your predecessors. So why does it have to be glyphosate? Why can't it be harvesting? Why can't it be picking the weeds? Why can't it be bottom screening? The only reason presented for why they want to glyphosate the hell out of those lily pads is because we need boat travel. Now, remember what Mr. Whitman, Whitford said? You asked him two different times, Mr. Fournier, about, what about glyphosate? Do we use it in the county? And he said, oh, no, only under the most dire of circumstances would we ever use stuff for anything. Remember that? So now you want to use it in our drinking water supply. You want to use it in our drinking water supply so these guys' boats can go up and down, and we can all pay five hundred dollars a year for it. That's outrageous. Thanks again for excluding my properties.
Terry Ballard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Terry Ballard. I'm a thirty-five-year veteran. I retired in two thousand and twelve. I have two houses in Tanglewild, unincorporated Thurston County, and one in Olympia, so I'm a pretty good taxpayer here. I was just wondering why the voucher list, for the second time, has been excluded. Are we embarrassed of what we pay for? Aren't we open government? Do we need to authorize something that we previously paid for weeks ago? I don't know. Is it an embarrassment to have that, to pay for something that we don't really want to pay for? As you know, I am a really good taxpayer. Have we discovered why the funding for the Veterans Fund is so out of ray? I gave you all the funding sheets last time. I'm just wondering what this one point six eight seven million dollars is sitting there and doing absolutely nothing. I guess we need more tax, huh, so we can pay it someplace else? As far as the next page is concerned, my concern was that we're not paying salaries and wages. Somebody manipulated the, this whole sheet. We have zero balance, but again, we're paying personal benefits, really? I don't know whose school of accounting this is, but it's just not mine. Did we, did we figure out that we're, that we have written notices from the organizations, and we're actually going to put their organization down, and we're not going to use their membership cards to represent their, these organizations so we, so they can take it back to the organization and disperse the information? There's two out of fifteen are members at large. Going through a little bit of this, of this adopted nineteen eighty-six, revised in six of twenty twenty-four is the Thurston County Veterans Assistance Policies. Why are you so, why are you so prejudiced? Why are you so discriminatory towards veterans? Homeless is being treated, treated better than, than the veterans here, okay? Homeless, you pay for homeless shelter services. I thought that was paid out of the home extortion fund. Are we supplementing social services now with the Veterans Fund? Also, we, we paid thirty K a year for three years for the hub rental, but if you're, but if you're an organization like V F W and stuff, you can't, you can't get anything if it's furnished by the state or any municipality that does not, it doesn't qualify for the meeting place rent, really. So who pays for the hub? I guess that's Lacey, huh? So anyway, going, going down the list, examples of community activities is referral fairs and veteran stand downs. I currently went through Kitsap. I currently went through Pierce. I go through the Fort Lewis Stand Down. How many years has it been since we had a veteran stand down to support veterans? Probably nil to none. It takes, and also, the applicants who report no income for the previous thirty-one days must be eligible and receiving Washington State Department of Social Services and Health Basic Food Assistance and/or Medicaid in order to draw from this fund. Really? Are we doing the same for the homeless? Okay? As far as the hotel stays, there's a requirement for the hotel stays, but we have a homeless hotel that was given by Maryland Strickland to a five oh one C three so they can live peaceful and live a free life. Very unfair for veterans and very unfair for families that are struggling. I'm very distraught on how you treat the veterans, and everybody else and the homeless seem to be treated a hell of a lot better than we are. Thank you.
Sir, did you want to give testimony?
I certainly do, thank you very much.
Come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Arthur West. I live on Berry Street in Olympia in a house that I own. I also pay taxes on a hundred feet of waterfront and an acre of tidelands on the west side adjoining Evergreen State College. I'd like to talk today about interlocal cooperation agreements. Back in two thousand, the county entered into an I L A to govern the operations of LOT. And significantly in that, it formed a functional equivalent of a, of a public agency, and by its express terms, it's subject to both the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act. Now, I'd like to point that out in the context of the I L A that D E S is trying to get you, the county, to sign. And I support cleanup of the inlet. I support the joint efforts of the parties to do so. I just don't support this particular I L A and the terms of it because of a couple factors. One, the structure, I think, is defective in that it would have to be the functional equivalent of a public agency. It should properly have to be subject to the Public Records Act and the Open Public Meetings Act. It creates a board to make all the decisions on dredging that is, would not, as, as my reading of the I L A shows, be a public entity. Public would not be so, be able to attend the meetings, and it would not be subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. I don't think that's proper, and I don't think LOT can enter into that, or the LOT partners could properly enter into such an agreement due to the stipulations that were made in the formation of LOT. Again, I support the cleanup of the bay. In fact, was one of my Public Records Act suits that produced the evidence that dioxin contaminates the bay. So I've been involved in this for a number of years. And the key issue that I see is the port's remediation of the dioxin-contaminated areas. This I L A, and if you look at, I believe, page eleven, it says that if the, if the dam breaching occurs before the port conducts its remediation, costs will increase significantly. I don't think the county, as a taxpayer, I don't believe the county should commit itself to paying costs that could increase significantly if the port doesn't, doesn't conduct its remediation first. So I would, I would ask that the county require, before signing this I L A, that it form an organization that will be transparent and subject to both of the Sunshine laws, and that the I L A require that the port commence and conclude its remediation of the dioxin-contaminated areas of the sound prior to the dam breaching, which I believe would significantly muddy the waters of the proposed remediation. How, how technically are you going to remediate something that's covered in a layer of mud? So I would ask the court, the county to review the document that I provided today for a handout, and I'd ask them to, very politely, talk to D E S and the rest of the, the members of this proposed I L A, and seek to reform it so that it'll be accountable to the public and so that the taxpayers of the county won't be stuck with unknown and, and significantly larger payments due to the fact that it doesn't specify that the port has to remediate its dioxin-contaminated areas first. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the boardroom. Is there anyone on Zoom who wish to provide public testimony? Heath Hikala, you have four minutes.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Heath Hikala here on behalf of the American Forest Resource Council. I'm coming to you from our offices in downtown Olympia. I am not a resident of Pierce County, however, I'm a resident of Pierce County, however. Here today to follow up on the letter that you all approved last week. I first wanted to note, the last time I appeared before you all, I did ask for an opportunity for our industry to meet with you as a commission, to come in and be consulted and have a voice similar to that you gave other folks on this issue. I was disappointed that we didn't get that opportunity. I would certainly welcome any of you who are interested in learning about wood products, their carbon benefits, and how our forests are sustainably managed, to join us for a mill tour or a woods tour. I, in fact, was on the Capitol State Forest last week and really appreciated seeing the care that D N R manages the Capitol State Forest with, particularly if you look at the history of what took place on the Capitol State Forest. So I certainly welcome that. I would ask, there was a comment after the letter was approved last week commending how you all had reached out to all the various sides on this issue. I, I do hope that you'll correct for the record that there was never any attempt to work with the forest product sector or consult with them in the letter or any of your efforts thus far, but we certainly would welcome that. I would also like to address this issue about, you know, the financial information that the Department of Natural Resources has provided, and somehow that that information has been misleading. I think that is quite inaccurate, frankly, and if you look at what D N R provided, it was simply an appraisal of all of the timber sales on the Capitol State Forest that are currently on hold or blocked due to the commission's efforts, no more, no less than that with the shares by taxing code for where that revenue has gone. One could make the argument that actually those estimates are quite low because appraised value versus what actually is going to be the auction value is typically about fifty percent higher is what these timber sales yield rather than the appraised value. So in fact, i- if I was being honest, the misleading idea here is that you, the claim that you can keep the revenue going to these junior taxing districts without going in and doing some of the harvest that D N R has proposed, you simply can't. And I know that you all sent a letter technically today to the Board of Natural Resources, but that is just not, if you look at what's available out there, you can't do that for these taxing districts. So I do feel for the school districts in particular, fire districts and others who continue to see revenue reductions. The reality is that that revenue, that, that reduced revenue, delayed revenue is going to go out many months from now because for how long it takes to plan D N R timber sales, and then once they're sold, it does take time for that, those harvest operations to take place, so the longer and longer you wait and delay, the longer it'll be until revenue comes to those junior taxing districts, and that is unfortunate. So thank you for the opportunity to comment. Anytime you'd like to get out and see wood products, carbon-friendly wood products that the U N and the COP twenty-eight promote that we use more of, we'd be glad to have you. Thank you for your time today.
Anyone else on Zoom who would like to provide testimony today?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. T Reed?
No, thank you.
Okay, I think that covers public comment. Thank you so much. We will move to item two of the agenda, which is county manager update. Anything to report?
Nothing to update at this time.
Okay. Let's go to item three, which is a consent agenda, including items three A through three N, any requests from a commissioner to remove an item from consent. I don't think we actually approved the agenda. Missed that. Let's go back. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Perfect. So back to three A through three N, I'm going to ask for motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. None available. Motion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Imposed. Amendment consent items three A through three N are approved, and we'll jump to item four, which is a public health and social services item, amendment number twenty-two to Washington State Department of Health, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four consolidated Interim Director of Public Health and Social Services.
Good afternoon, Dr. Dan Freyheit, interim Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is a request to approve amendment number twenty-two, as you stated, to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract for a total of two million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. These were all allocations that were taken into consideration during the preparation of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And just for some specifics within, the primary increase mentioned pertains to the ongoing F P H S funding for the new state fiscal year, and this is primarily funding staff. The E L C funding is a rollover of funding specific to COVID, and this is allowing the use of the remaining balance by extending the end date. The COVID vaccines are for funding, is for education, outreach, communication, or surrounding COVID vaccines. The perinatal hepatitis B funding and the V F C Operations Vaccine Improvement Project are funding that we receive annually, and that supports the staff time towards those objectives. There is no increase in There is no increase in the public health emergency preparedness or FEP funding. It is just an amendment to the Statement of Work. And it's a renewal of our MCH block grant funds for the period of October 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. And with these funds, we pay for a portion of the children, youth with special needs, healthcare needs, work and a .9 FTE of a nurse family partnership nurse for Thurston County. And we also use these funds for systems work, such as the Partners Committee work that we do to reduce child abuse. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions on this item? Nope. Ready for motion. I move to approve amendment number 22 to the Washington, to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract CLH 31030, providing an additional $2,188,633 for a revised maximum of $24,446,592 for the duration of January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024, and authorize the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services or designate execute the amendment.
Second.
Motion in second to approve amendment number 22 to the state Consolidated Contract. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I guess I'd just like to point out to the public that may be new to the process here that if they're interested in seeing discussions about these issues that we're dealing with today, they could go to our Agenda Setting at nine o'clock this morning to review those discussions or two weeks ago at Agenda Setting. And actually, in, on many of these items, we've had other work sessions. So I'd just like to keep the public informed. When we don't ask questions, it's because we've got a pretty good understanding of what is going on. So I'd just like to point that out to the public once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion, comments, questions?
And I might point out, this is money coming in. It makes it pretty easy to vote for.
Are these, is this kind of expected money or is this kind of money that expands the programs that you would have?
Each line item is different, but most of them are the annual funding or else extension of funding.
Okay, very good. No, hearing no other discussion, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All Commissioner Klaus there. And that motion carries unanimously. And with the reconfiguration of the agenda this morning, that brings us to the standing Commissioner reports. Commissioner Edwards, anything?
Now, I wasn't exclusive in, in dealing with some of these things, the South Sound Real Estate Forum. My seatmates went to Chamber of Commerce down in Tonino, same. But I did meet with Floyd Chapman, our Racial Equity Council co-chair, and spent a little time with Floyd and gained some insight into where he feels that group ought to go, especially now that our staff person has moved on and the concerns that they have. So that was just a good meeting with folks that are doing volunteer work. That's one of 40-some committees that consist of volunteers in Thurston County that put a lot of time and effort into their particular areas of expertise. Lots of calls and emails on, from constituents and visits, site visits, on compliance issues where our code compliance people are obviously not able to keep up. And quite a bit of input from timber and from the lakes issues. So that's been my week. Thank you.
Mr. Klaus, I'll jump to you if you had anything you wanted to report.
I have no reports, no updates.
Okay, very good. Commissioner.
I have been reporting as we've had meetings, but if anyone from the public would like to see my schedule, I do post it online.
Excellent. Commissioner Fournier.
I gave a report out this morning on the Chehalis Basin Flood Authority Tour, and that was probably my most significant meeting.
Okay. I'll just tick through my events the last couple of weeks. Also met with Mr. Chapman of the Racial Equity Committee. That was a good meeting. Also went on the Chehalis Flood Authority Site Tour. Just in no particular order, the Tumwater Falls Fest was great, bigger than, better than ever this year. The downtown Olympia had Hispanic Heritage Day Lula Festival, they called it, and that was fun. The Medic One 50th Anniversary Event, we had a good, great job by Emergency Management Department and all the team there. Attended the Offutt Lake Management District Annual Meeting. Went to an open house at Evanti Bike Shop with a partnership with InterCity Transit's doing, kind of like the walk and roll bike shop system that InterCity Transit has. Checked out a Homes First project that the City of Lot, original owner of the property, had given to Tumwater, who partnered with Homes First to create, was clean and sober housing in Tumwater. Had a Timber Counties Caucus meeting, State Building Code Council meeting, Steady meeting, attended the Zonta International event, had a Salmon Recovery Council meeting, attended the Salmon Stream Team event two weekends ago, and the Experience Olympia and Beyond, which is a great event in Tonino last week and a half ago. So a lot going on. Commissioner Edwards.
I guess, because I know my seatmates were there as well, but attended a farewell potluck for Jeremy Davis, and he's going to be missed. He's been a real asset to the county, covering a lot of different roles here for many years, and wish him well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. So that's the end of the items. We do have a meeting tonight at 5:30.
6:00 PM.
It's at 6:00 PM. Okay, thank you. 6:00 PM at the City of Lacey, and it's with a specific issue with regard to an annexation, Drayem Road annexation. We'll be taking public testimony on that at the Lacey Chamber, because it's a joint public hearing between City of Lacey and Thurston County, and a couple other topics might be raised, just of general interest between the two jurisdictions. But if we don't see you there, see you next time. We're adjourned.